All right, it is 5:30. We will bring this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls to order on Tuesday, February 16th. Our first item that's not on our agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Well, our first item on the actual agenda is to approve the agenda. We have no additions or deletions at this time, so if anybody... Actually, we do have one addition, and it's just the airport cash flow payments to the city and county, and that's going to be under our accounts transferable. So Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. We have the minutes of Monday, February 1st, the special city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the regular city council meeting of February 1st, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. And finally, under our minutes, we have the Committee of the Whole Meeting from February 8th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch.
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. That brings us to our accounts payable. As I did say, we do have a slight change on it. First, our transfers are from the City of International Falls going to the permanent improvement, $666,666.66, and that's being split between the 601 Water and the 603 Sewer, both in the amount of $33,333.33. Going to the 403 Fund Reserve for Capital Outlay, $25,760.42. That's coming from the 601 Water Fund, $19,136.17, and coming from the 603 Sewer, $6,624.25 for total transfers for the city of $92,427.8. City of International Falls claims, $386,974.71. Airport Commission claims, $11,144.44. Library Board claims of $7,730.1. And Airport Cash Flow Payments to the County and City, $2,162,878.06 for a total accounts payable of $2,568,727.16. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Discussion? City Administrator, can you just explain the cash flow payments of $2 million?
We...I understand that we receive monies from the FAA, and so this is to distribute funds to the City of International Falls and the county for their share of what was dispersed previously for expenditures for airport projects.
So the city will be getting about a million, $1.5 million, and the county, $1.5 million?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Anyone in the audience have anything to bring forward to the city council? In the event that somebody online wants to bring something to the attention of the council, we will also have an opportunity later. Just leave...either raise your hand or just message that you'd like to bring something to the attention of the council. Next, we have the first reading of Contract Ordinance 973. This is an ordinance setting rates to be collected as revenue supporting the utility operations. Chair would entertain a motion to have the first reading.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm going to give it to Mike. It was really close, though. Andy's on my Goodyear. Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to Old Business, the second and final reading of the low bid of $781,280 for the 2021 Elevated Storage Tank to be awarded to Viking Industrial Painting. Chair would entertain a motion for that contract ordinance.
I'll make. Second.
Ooh, I don't even know what happened there. I'm going to go with Counselor Deitch for the motion and Counselor Holden for the second.
Because they're on the same side over there.
Yeah, because they're on my Goodyear.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and second for those contract ordinances.
You were shot right out. Again.
I can't even do this right now. Hearing no other discussion, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0.
You going to walk around and go to the Goodyear next time? What's the plan?
He's the same age as I am.
But that is not pertinent to what we're even discussing. We're moving on.
Man, you guys are old.
Okay, now we're going to move to the building demolition policy. The first item is to consider a moratorium on accepting new building demolition applications.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. We have a motion and a second discussion. I would just point out that today at Land Use and Legislation, we did have a discussion regarding the demo policy. There will be something moving forward for the council to take a look at at the next council meeting with the recommendation from Land Use and Legislation. We'll have some information for you guys in the very near future. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, I need a motion to remove from the table the Consider Building Demolition Application from Owners Terry Hart and Lisa and Ben Mortensen on a non-homesteaded property at 1418 Main Avenue.
So moved.
We have a motion to remove from the table from Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Now, the action is before us for consider the building demolition from the applicants on the 1418 Main Avenue address. Chair would entertain a motion to accept or deny at this time.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. I heard that. Yep, I remember you. Discussion?
Can we get some rationale on that? From somebody?
Yeah. So at our Committee of the Whole Meeting, we were having a discussion on we needed to figure out how we were going to be handling the demolition policy. We did move that to Land Use and Legislation. We met today discussing the demolition policy. We will be making...well, we are recommending to the council that we adopt the Property Maintenance Code, which we had a discussion about as well. In the Property Maintenance Code, it outlines how to do demolition policies, and we will...we're requesting to remove the city's demolition policy and utilizing the International Building Code's demolition policy that would be intertwined with what we're requesting for the ordinance changes. With that being said, there will be some more discussion on that. We do not have the capability right now to move...to tear down a building and take it to our demo site, and at this time, we're not prepared to continue the program until we come up with an official policy. So is there any other questions on that? Would you like to follow up with anything?
I think we've covered it. We had a meeting today, and we did well.
Any other questions?
So when the new policy comes up, they'll have to go, like, totally through the application process again, or...this application got in prior to the moratorium? So that's my question.
It also...also, it's a non-homestead...or it's a homestead.
Right. Oh, I know. I know. I'm just saying that...
That's the one thing that I guess I would be not favorable to do it because it's non-homestead property.
Right. And that's the one thing, too, with this particular one. It being a non-homesteaded property, it would have had to have come to the council to make that decision regardless. So if the decision is to deny, that is a decision that the council can make. So...any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four for the motion, one against the motion, two deny. Next, we go to New Business, which is mayoral appointment of members to internal and external committees for council confirmation. Budget and Finance, I would nominate...or I would appoint Counselor Kraus as the chair. The meeting time to be 4:00 on the second Monday of every month. Chair would entertain a motion to...and I don't have an admin liaison. I would assume it would be the city administrator or whoever's acting in that role moving forward. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the budget and finance.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And all vote yes, four for the motion and one abstention. Next would be Human Resources. I would make Counselor Holden the chair. The meeting time historically has been for the fourth Wednesday of the month at 4:30. Does that work for you? And with that being said, myself as the second committee member, Chair would entertain a motion to accept that.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus with a second from Counselor Deitch. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
My understanding is that in the city ordinance, I believe it's Section 2-30, there's a statement that on advisory boards and committees, any chair to that committee should be on the council for at least...or on the committee, I think, for a year before they're appointed to the chair position. So you might want to cross-reference that, and I'm drawing that...bringing that to the council's attention.
I wouldn't have a problem with that. You know, a year goes by pretty fast, and I'd really be interested in it, so.
Okay. So with that being said, is there anyone on the council that would like to chair the Human Resources?
I would like to do that, Mayor.
Okay. So I will change that to Counselor Deitch. And leaving myself on that for the fourth Wednesday at 4:30.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I note that if in the future you were going to appoint Counselor Holden, he would have to sit on the committee for a year? So by putting yourself on there, it will either be you or Counselor Deitch in the next year that you're appointing chair? Because, again, has to sit on the board, not the council.
Yeah, I'd like to be on there. As a...you know, wouldn't be chair, but I'd like to be on Human Resources.
Is that accurate as it's written?
I believe it is. I'm doing this from memory, but I believe it's in Section 2-30. I don't have a copy, but it's in the bottom book.
So my question is, is then, how did we have any...how did we have anybody on it in that first year?
We weren't following the charter, obviously.
So if you have an all newly elected person...people, you'd have no way of having it...okay.
Well, the council has staggered terms, and so there's always at least boundless to it.
So I would then...I'll put Counselor Deitch and Counselor Holden on for Human Resources at 4:00 on Wednesday at 4:30.
At 4:30.
Or the fourth Wednesday at 4:30.
Fourth Wednesday at 4:30. Okay.
With that being said, Counselor Kraus, are you okay with those changes?
Absolutely.
Counselor Deitch, second.
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, any other discussion?
Chair then.
I'm sorry?
Leon's chair then.
Leon would be the chair. I will call the question.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Aye.
Well, now I want to abstain. Yeah. All vote yes, motion carries, three for the motion, two abstentions. Land Use and Legislation, we would have Counselor Deitch as the chair, myself sit on that. That's at the second Monday at 5:00 PM. Chair would entertain a motion for Land Use and Legislation.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Call the question.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries, four for the motion, one abstention. And finally, Public Works and Infrastructure, we'll have Counselor Buller as the chair and myself, and that would be 2:30 on the second Tuesday of the month. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, isn't it...is it three counselors?
It only has...
Or just two?
I believe you only have to have two.
Okay. I just...that's three.
We've had three in the past.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
All right. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four for the motion, one abstention.
Just to clarify, that's the second Tuesday at 2:30.
Next is to approve the Committee of the Whole Recommendation to Send a Letter to the Delinquent Water Utility Customers and Encourage Payment. Chair would entertain a motion to send that letter.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, the City of International Falls Hydrant Use and Maintenance Policy. Public Works Director Brokaw.
Yes, the hydrant use...maintenance and use policy is something we put together in the Public Works to get a better handle on who uses hydrants and when. We do a lot of maintenance on privately-owned hydrants, so it kind of defines our role, their responsibilities, and makes it easier for everybody to know their roles with city fire hydrants and privately-owned hydrants that are on our distribution system. We've got approximately 475 fire hydrants that the city owns, probably another 50 to 75 privately-owned hydrants on our distribution system. Any questions?
I would also like to point out that this has been a real joy of Ted's, and it's come up in casual conversation quite a bit at a handful of meetings that I sit through, and he's very proud of himself on this hydrant policy.
I put out a lot of light reading. It's enjoyable.
So with that being said, the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt and approve the implementation of the Fire Hydrant Use and Maintenance Policy.
I'll move that. Buller on with that.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Discussion? Please.
Good job, Ted. I think it's going to clarify a lot of issues with...especially the privates that are out there that they need to have some of these licenses to work on it, and if the city is the one they chose...choose to do it, then there's fees that they're going to have to pay, and I just think that it's going to be safer for everybody that is going to ever use a hydrant. If they do, it's going to work then, so.
Thank you, Counselor Buller.
Good job.
I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have approved the request for RFP for Seeking Professional Services to Perform a Job Classification and Compensation System Study. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a draft copy dated February 17th of 2021 of a cover letter and request for proposal, as you pointed out, for a Job Classification and Compensation System Study. So the city's current point system that we use for pay equity purposes was adopted in the late '80s, and there's been a number of positions that have shifted around duties, essential functions, duties, responsibilities, and there's been some different titles. And so the council back in April had authorized, moving forward with the request for proposal, to have a professional services firm evaluate our internal wage structure as well as review it on an external basis to see how we are in terms of being comparable pay for similar type job duties in the City of International Falls versus other cities similar in size and complexity as the City of International Falls. So we've drafted this request for proposal. There's a timeframe in here in which we'll have applications coming in by noon on the 19th of March. There'll be an evaluation period starting the following Monday, potentially, if the council chooses to do so, having consultant interviews on April 12th, and then award a contract at the second meeting in April, which would be April 19th. And we'll have the consultants that propose...specify a proposed completion date. We're indicating that we want it completed not later than July 1st of 2022, so that any revisions can be incorporated into the 2023 budget, if there are any. And so that's the timetable that we laid out. I would anticipate that the consultant will be working with our staff and department heads evaluating the duties and responsibilities, and then ensuring that our job descriptions are also up to date with the current job duties that people are performing, and then develop a pay equity number scale that would be consistent with what the state requirements are for the pay equity law, so.
Great. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the RFP?
So moved.
A motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Our next item is Consider Applying for MINDOT Funding Assistance for the Local Roads Improvement Program. Director of Public Works, Ted Brokaw.
I know this is no fire hydrant policy, but thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm looking for permission to proceed with applying for LRIP Local Road Improvement Program for up to a $1.1 million grant. And basically, we'd have a more...if you approve it today, we would have a more detailed resolution to your first meeting in March. In my discussions with WISSEF, we've picked a section of two...well, one municipal state aid stretch in International Falls that would be Second Street from Second Avenue to Eighth Avenue, which we kind of feel that it meets the criteria of regional significance, you know, with...basically, it's the road in front of PCA on both sides, which are both in need of attention, but they are far enough down the list where if...they're pretty much said that, you know, getting it awarded the first year, it's a four-year grant, so we're good for up to four years. So basically, what I'm looking for is permission to get our name in the hat and hope for the best. It basically would push another project along quicker if we were able to get this financial help.
Do we have to have engineering done for that road? Has that already happened?
No, that would be part of the...after...in the next...before your next council meeting, we're going to come up with costs for that and whatnot. Basically, what I need to do is to get ahold of PCA, get letters of recommendations, you know, approval of the project. So the one thing I did in discussions with WISSEF, they've agreed to do the grant application for free, so there's really no cost out for us to put our name in the hat, basically. So they're going to do the legwork over the next couple of weeks and hope for the best.
Okay. So the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval to apply for the Minnesota Department of Transportation Funding Assistance Program?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden, because he used more words. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion?
Question, Ted. Are you going to ask for letters of recommendation from PCA and some people on roads?
Yep. And that's what I need to start putting together before we bring the detailed resolution. Even if you don't decide, at least...I didn't want to start asking for letters if you folks didn't know about it, and we're getting right down to the deadline. So I just wanted you guys to know that I'm...you know, if you guys are okay with it, I'm going to do the legwork on it, and, you know, we just need to get our name in the hat by the deadline in the first week of March, and then we'll go back and get a cost estimate of what it would take to put the engineering together and whatnot.
Ted, great.
Mayor?
Yes?
So Ted, you're saying the application is due after the March 1st council meeting?
Yes.
And you will have a resolution for council action at the March 1st meeting?
Yes.
And is this purely a grant program, or is it a combination grant and low-interest loan program?
I believe it's a grant application. I know that there's a lot of cost share. There's certain aspects that they don't cover as part of that, but we're going to work that out. There's...
We can cover that through PI funds or something then, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's up to a $1.1 million grant. So I know Big Fork just got one into their Rylo Saw Mill for $700,000. It kind of fits that same mold is what we're looking at here.
Great. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you.
Next, approved license transfers effective February 1, 2021. Apple Green Midwest doing business as Express Lane 2325 to IYS Ventures LLC, doing business as iMart Stores. They're looking for a cigarette license, fireworks license, 3-2 off sale, gasoline pumps, 18 of those, and restaurant license. Chair would entertain a motion for that transfer?
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Counselor Kraus.
Mr. Mayor, do we have to do them separately?
I was going to do them separately because they're two separate businesses.
Okay.
Uh, chair would, uh, any discussion?
Are these the Freedom Stations?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. And then the second one is Express Lane 2337 to IYS Ventures LLC, uh, I Mart Stores, cigarette license, three-two off sale license, gasoline pumps license and a restaurant license. Chair would entertain a motion to transfer those licenses.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councillor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we go to a resolution approving the International Falls Bass Championship application and one to four day permit for a temporary on sale liquor license at the annual International Falls Bass Championship being held August 26th through 28th, 2021 at Smokey Bear Park at 603rd Street in International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion-
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
After all that, I'll second that.
Yeah, that's great.
That's what an intro. Mm-hmm.
Well, we didn't have it last year. We have to build some excitement for this year's. So, uh, we have a motion and a second. Any, uh, discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four for the motion, one abstention. Here, I'll make this one a little bit less exciting. Next, we have a resolution for approving the International Falls Bass Championship application for exempt permit to sell raffle tickets with the drawing to be held Saturday, August 28th, 2021 at Smokey Bear Park, 603rd Street, International Falls.
Move.
We have a motion by Councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
See, it wasn't as exciting, was it?
No.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
And I will vote yes, motion carries, four for the motion and one abstention. Any other business to come before the council? Then that brings us to the reports of all boards, committees, department heads, uh, City Administrator.
Mayor, just briefly for council information, I wanted you to be aware that we did receive our pre-application funds for the tax abatement, uh, project. And so that information has been forwarded to our, uh, financial advisor, which is, which is doing a financial analysis of the project. Uh, I had a conversation with her yesterday morning for about a half hour and she's been coordinating with the county assessor. So I'm hoping to perhaps have some information back from her, uh, sometime this week, probably later in the week.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Any questions for the City Administrator? City Attorney?
I heard you had a busy day.
I did. We set a new record for the City of International Falls. We had 52 criminal cases heard by Judge DeSanto today, uh, and got through them all, uh, in time for me to get here to the meeting. Not much happening on the blight, uh, front, although I did meet with Kelly Myers and Jared Baldwin, uh, and at their suggestion, uh, I think what we are going to ask the council, uh, to consider approving, and we, we really, it's already allowed under the ordinance we have, is that we've been going from the ticketing stage to the criminal stage if they didn't correct it. And Kelly's suggestion is, is that we add an interim phase, uh, which is the administrative penalty. Uh, and so, uh, which would be the $150 that we have in our ordinance. Uh, and if they don't correct it within the seven days they're given on the ticket, uh, then we go to the administrative phase and they have another seven days to correct it. Uh, if they don't correct it during that seven days, then the administrative fee automatically gets applied, uh, through the administrative office. Uh, and if it's not paid, it gets added assessed to their taxes at the end of the year. And then, uh, for those that don't comply with the two inspections, then we go to the criminal step. Uh, and the thought is by Kelly and Jared and I agree, uh, that, um, that may keep things from getting bogged down in court. Uh, plus we get those administrative fees handled more quickly. Uh, and once people have had to pay that $150 and, and word gets out that it's going to your taxes, I think that, uh, it may quicken the whole process of, of lessening the blight in the community. So, uh, and I, I don't know that we need any kind of resolution or approval. Uh, they were going to, Kelly, did you get a chance to talk with, about, at the land use meeting or is that coming up?
We brought it up a little bit today and just discussed it.
Okay. I don't necessarily think we need any action. It's more an internal policy. It's already allowed under ordinances. We just have not done that second step, but I think it's a great idea and, um, I guess I'm anxious, I'd be glad to hear input, uh, to see if you just want us to start doing it that way.
I think, uh, we actually had a discussion today at the land use and legislation about that and part of the, the, um, international property maintenance code, it fits right into that and all of the conversation. We're going to be bringing that to the committee of the whole, have a, a deeper conversation about that, but that is the recommendation of the land use and legislation to do that.
All right. So then my thought would be is what, instead of going directly to the criminal process, we'll try this administrative step as an interim step, uh, and hopefully that'll be successful and, and, uh, will involve less attorney time, which can be costly to the city.
Please.
Okay. As I mentioned earlier today at our, at our land use and legislation meeting, when we first started this a couple of years ago, that was the major intent, was issuing citations before they went to the court. And I'm glad to see that's finally moving forward in that direction.
Okay. Very good. Well, we will proceed in that fashion then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions about anything else? Okay.
Thank you. Department heads, anything to bring forward? Okay. And you guys got a copy of your, uh, your blight report in, uh, in the packet, um, along with the police report, um, and the fire rescue EMS report. Reports, uh, from the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. I, uh, I just have, well, I have a whole bunch of things, but I don't want to bring them all up today. We'll save that until the next meeting. It'll be way more fun that way. So today I had a unique opportunity. We had a young man in, uh, in our community, a fourth grader, and he came in toward City Hall and, uh, he's doing a report of how, uh, youth can affect local government without being, having the opportunity to vote. And one of the conversations that we got into today was, um, he had a question on if, if the city had a, um, time capsule ever placed somewhere in the, in, in our past. And I said, well, that's one of the things about being, being a relatively young mayor. I don't know any of the history, but now that we have Mike, I'm very certain he'd know.
Well, not necessarily.
So, so anyways, uh, that was one of the questions he, he had had and he also had brought up how interesting it would be in 2021 or 2020 to, uh, make a time capsule for our community, especially with COVID and, and a very unique portion of our time, uh, in history. So I think I'm going to reach out to the, uh, museum and see if there's something that they could do to help us and kind of work with the youth, because if we can't keep our youth engaged, it's very difficult to keep the youth engaged. So, um, I'm going to reach out to them and see if there's something we can do to help and maybe we can get a community project with, uh, with some of this area children. So that's all I have for today. Anybody in the audience? Oh, I do want to tell you one more thing. Um, I, with it being Valentine's Day week and such, uh, last week, uh, myself, Tricia and Leif, um, ended up having to cancel our meeting on Thursday and we are meeting this Thursday at 3:30. So we are, we are moving forward with that. The discussions have been good. We're not dropping it. It's just been, we're kind of busy people, so. Anybody in the audience have anything to bring to the council? Hearing none, uh, correspondence, you have the Visitors and Convention Bureau minutes in your packet and our next regular meeting will be on March 1st, 2021 at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.